Call to order of the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting today, Tuesday, May 18th at 5:34 PM. We are having technical difficulties with our GoToWebinar platform, and so we are unable to have a video feed for our virtual attendees. However, we will still be able to have presentations for our virtual attendees, and the ability to raise your hand or ask questions is still applicable. So Alan, would you please provide us with an introduction?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Grant. Hello and welcome. My name is Alan, and I will assist the mayor and elected officials with the GoToWebinar portion of today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so those virtual audience members know how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise. There will be specific times during this meeting when audience members can participate. The first way is by typing your question into the questions section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. The second way is by clicking on the raise hand icon, indicating you wish to speak. A meeting organizer will announce the next speaker at the appropriate time and unmute their audio, at which time you should state your name and address for the record. Please minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your microphone during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Tyson Sorga.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow L. Hay. Commissioner Christina Romulus.
I believe she is not present.
Not present, okay. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you so much. All right. I'll now invite Pastor Chuck Brandon of Gateway Community Church to come to the podium to lead us with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to be here to get things started in the right way and the right spirit tonight. If you'd like to join me in prayer. Dear Father God, we thank you so much for loving us with an everlasting love. May each one of us and all of us call upon you every day because we need your strength, your power, your wisdom, your love for one another, endurance and perseverance, and vision to walk every day and look ahead to the next day as well. Father, I pray that what happens tonight, including this prayer, will make a difference as you hear it and answer it in your own particular way. I pray for the people of Boynton Beach, the men, the women, the children, all our families, all our people, every one of them. Help a lot of them to make turnarounds, new starts, get new strength for the life before them, help them with their issues and their problems, help them to look to you for guidance and wisdom and strength that can come from no other place. Lord, I thank you for our police department, our fire department, and all the workers who work in the city to make it operate in such a good way every single day for our citizens in our city and surrounding area. And Lord, I thank you for our mayor and our commission. I pray tonight on this agenda that you'll give them wisdom. They need to make the right decisions to work through things in a way that will benefit the people and the future of Boynton Beach in every respect possible. And Lord, I thank you for them because this is not an easy job. We thank you for their perseverance in all that they do and working to make this place a special place. And Lord, for the people who live here now and the ones who will be coming here, may they find it to be a good place to live, a good spirit here, good faith, good lives, good jobs, a good place to bring up a family, a good place to be a single person, just a good place. And we ask for your help in doing that. And Lord, I also thank you so very much for the salvation you've provided through your son Christ, for the life you've given us, for the future we look forward to. And we always ask you every single day to help us keep the faith, but also give it away because other people need it as well. We pray this in your mighty name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to agenda approval. I've had a request to add an announcement 3G for our Memorial Day event. Is there any other additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving forward with informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
I met with representatives from East Wind Development, Jack Weir and Bradley Miller, and that is all. Thank you.
Commissioner Hay.
I met with Bradley Miller and his folks. And that's it. No other disclosures.
Vice Mayor.
Same disclosure. I've met with Bradley Miller and Jack Weir of East Wind Development. And also for 12D, that's regarding Q-Pod, I've spoken to the Parkside HOA and the surrounding breweries of the district.
As for myself, on May 6th, I attended informational session at the New Ocean Breeze Affordable Housing Development. On May 8th, I attended the John Lewis Day of Action, and I want to give a shout out to our police department that did an amazing job escorting the motorcade of voters from Boynton Beach all the way up to Lantana. May 9th, I wanted to wish everyone a Happy Mother's Day. On May 13th, I attended the Boynton Beach Veterans Task Force. On May 14th, I did a transit workshop held by our Transportation Planning Agency. On May 16th, I attended the South Florida Fair for the Mayor's Day Parade. It's always a fun day at the fair, and I believe we have two more weekends left. I did speak with Jack Weir in regards to his proposal. And I believe that is it for my informational disclosures. Seeing no furthermore, we will move on to announcements. Our first announcement is to proclaim May 22nd to 28, 2021, as National Safe Boating Week. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas on behalf of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Flatilla 5-4 Boynton Beach, Florida, Flatilla Commander Sherri Forman invites you to be aware of the dangers that lurk in the water that surrounds our communities. And whereas this U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary in Boynton Beach, Florida, plays an important part in our community while providing public education and vessel safety checks for surrounding cities. They also provide search and rescue patrol for boaters that may be stranded or have lost their way. And whereas recreational boating is fun and enjoyable, and we are fortunate that we have sufficient resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure boating demands. However, our waterways can become crowded with thousands of new boats that enter our Florida waters each year, competing with each other for the same space we had a decade ago. And whereas each year, the United States Coast Guard, the U.S. CG Auxiliary, the National Safety Council, and other partners strive to let boaters know the importance to wear it, your personal life jacket. It makes good sense. This hope of everyone wearing their life jacket will drift away as the weather encourages more boaters on the water to feel uncomfortable to not wear them. All boaters and passengers should think more about safety and the elements to wear it in a responsible way. This is vital to show the knowledge and skills in order to reduce human error and improve boating skills while on the water. And whereas over 600 people have died in boating-related accidents in Florida in 2019, nowadays, life jackets are more attractive and more wearable than the styles of past years and deserve a fresh look by today's public. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim May 22nd, 2021 through May 28, 2021, as National Safe Boating Week. And I urge all boaters while on the water to wear it and practice safe boating habits. Please encourage all around you on boats and children to watch each other and challenge each other to wear it for a better tomorrow. And unfortunately, Sherri Forman is unable to accept the proclamation. Is there anyone? Alan, could you please open up the hand raising capability? Thank you. I just want to double check that there's no one in the audience that would want to accept proclamation. And is June National Water Safety Month in the senses that we make sure that everyone is able to swim? Okay. So I'll ask Casey when he comes up. Our next proclamation, proclaim the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And we have Winnie Tang and Takita Pang to accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas the month of May was chosen as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese citizen, Nakahama Monjuro, to the United States on May 7, 1843, but also on the anniversary of the May 10, 1869 completion of the first transcontinental railroad built with the backbreaking labor of nearly 20,000 Chinese immigrants. And whereas we celebrate the achievements and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that enrich our history, society, and culture, we must also acknowledge the dark gray aspect of the AAPI experience in America. Structural discrimination, prejudice, and injustice that most recently manifested in racist attacks on Asian Americans related to COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders, have distinguished themselves as leaders, researchers, in science, medicine, and technology, innovative farmers and ranchers, distinguished lawyers, judges, and government leaders in the arts, literature, and sports, as war heroes who defend our country from fascism and peacetime healthcare heroes currently on the front lines of the pandemic. And whereas today, more than 20 million Asian American Pacific Islanders live in the United States and through their actions make America a more vibrant, prosperous, and secure nation. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of May, 2021, as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Yes, thank you.
Hello. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor. This is wonderful news. I really appreciate this great news. You know, this is very important to all the Asian Pacific American communities here. And me, I am from... I'm a Boynton Beach resident. I live in Lyons Road there. But I am the former president of the Chinese Association of Science Education and Culture of South Florida, which covers from Jupiter all the way to Key West. And we have... It's the biggest Chinese community in South Florida, and we have a lot of activities. Last year, the president, the current president, is coming, but the traffic is, you know, he's stopped there. But he wants me to tell everybody, last year, we did a lot of, like other communities, we contributed a lot of masks to the community, to the Dairy Hospital, like, you know, $30,000 value to the community. So that's what we have been doing. And me, myself, I live in Boynton Beach. We have a Chinese Performing Arts Group. We have been in this community since 2009. And we performed all over the place. We participated with the All People's Day. We know that, right here, Dairy. And then we also go to the old school square in the past Bangladesh community. It's like 32 years they have been, you know, to promote their culture, the Asian culture. And we also participated, like Spanish, Japanese, all over the place. We have been here. And we are so happy and so proud to be here, to be part of the community. And thank you so much. This is very important, and we appreciate this very much.
We have a sister city in Shufu, China. And so it is something that hopefully I'll be able to reach out to them to have talks with them, and hopefully invite them over to see our new city hall and downtown area.
When this started, it was from the... What's his name? The person, he was in a school district, right? Yeah, he was the... And then his wife, and he adopted two daughters from China. And when he started this, I was part of it. I went to Chifu, and I was all over. I was the... Do you know the TEN, the Education Network in Palm Beach County? I was teaching Chinese for four years on TV, for Chinese. But later, because of the education budget cut and everything, I'm teaching now somewhere. But anyways, this is great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have Winnie Tang. You currently have the floor, Ms. Tang.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Commissioner. And my name is Winnie Tang, and I'm the President for Florida Asian Services and Vice President of Asian American Federation of Fathers. And our goal is working with the community across the further to promoting and encouraging the Asian community for civic engagements. And we will thank you for Vice Mayor Pasaga and Enable there came out for the community, for the community unity virtual to... For the anti-Asian unity that we are in the Palm Beach counties. So, and this is really honor for you to recognize the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and which is recognize the contribution of the Asians in these countries. I think that with your leadership and working honoring the Asian community is really taking that to... For the committee knowing us more. And then as Monica Sang, who is the former president for the CASSA and done so much work in the cultural program in the Palm Beach County and in the school board. As she mentioned, that she was virtually teaching the Palm Beach County students in Chinese. And one class, you also invited me to go up there and to giving a class to a group of middle school, high school students. I think this is a great way to have our student learning about another language and also to learn about the Asian contribution history in the school. That can be helpful for the future, more understanding and embracing culture, not only for the Asian, for everybody. So tonight, we are really thank you for Mayor and for your leadership. And then Vice Mayor Pasaga for the support and all those commissioners to supporting for this Asian Pacific American Heritage Month proclamation. And on behalf of the Asian community, we thank you for your support.
Thank you. And I believe you said we have the President of the Chinese Association that'd like to speak?
Well, Monica already spoke. She's the one, she just spoke. And the other president, she couldn't... I think she just said that stuck in traffic, so would not be able to be there yet.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Tang.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry because of traffic, I'll be there later. Also, left my mask in my car.
No worries.
And thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, all the commissioners for this great opportunity. And I'm so honored to be here, to join you all, to celebrate the Asian Pacific Heritage Month. And based on some studies, the first Asians around the United States are about 180 or 2,000 years ago. Since then, the Chinese community and also Asian community has grown bigger and bigger in America, also in Florida states. Based on some data, there are over 30,000 Chinese Americans in Florida. So as one of the largest Chinese organizations, KSEC, we have over 2,000 members. So every year, we organize a lot of activity, promote the culture, help the communities, also the new immigrants. We have a lot of engineers, artists, professors in organizations, like Monica Shang, she was our past president. And we do a lot of things to help the communities. One big achievement we did last year, you know, the pandemic. One big achievement we did is we collected over $60,000 from our 300 individuals, families, organizations. So we use the money to purchase medical supplies. We donated over 100,000 masks and all the medical supplies to local hospitals and police departments and laboratories and also senior citizen apartments. So we did our part to help our community to do better, to fight against COVID-19. And in the future, we'd like to enhance strengths, our connection with all the communities and also local governments, like our Boynton Beach governments, to work together, work hard to help our home better, make everyone happier and happier. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll also ask if Ms. Takita Pang would like to say a few words? You're currently self-muted.
Yes. Good evening. It's Takita King Pang. I'm the Executive Director of the Women's Foundation of Florida, and I just wanted to express our great appreciation to the entire council or commission for Boynton Beach. This is, as previous speakers have mentioned, this means a lot to our community to be acknowledged and to have this call out during the month of May. And I just really appreciate that you've stepped up to take the lead in this way, and we appreciate all of you in Boynton Beach. Thank you very much.
Our pleasure. Moving forward, we're on to announcing Gary Dunmire, Interim Director of Public Works and Engineering regarding Tire Amnesty Week for city residents from May 31st to June 4th, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary Dunmire, Interim Director of Public Works. I'd like to inform the residents and yourselves, obviously.
Gary, can you move the microphone a little up?
Certainly. I'd like to inform the residents and yourself of an event that's going to be lasting a week long, starting on Memorial Day. It's called Tire Amnesty Week, May 31st through June 4th. The event aims to help reduce community blight and mosquito-borne illness such as West Nile virus. We can all participate by disposing of old tires that might be laying around. So if you see some tires in your community or you have some in your backyard, simply take them to the curb. You can place up to eight tires, car or passenger tires, with or without rims, and we will pick them up. I do caution everyone to place them at least three feet away from anything you don't want damaged, such as a mailbox, what have you. If you have any questions, please contact Solid Waste at Public Works. The phone number is 561-742-6200. We should be there Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:30.
Thank you. And our next announcement is regarding to tree trimming in preparation for the approaching hurricane season.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is another announcement that's very important. Starts on June 1st. Hurricane season will be here. I encourage everybody to go out there and do their tree trimming in advance of hurricanes. If, once a storm has been named, I request that you please do not trim your trees. Let the winds knock your tree limbs down. Once a storm's been named, it's a very busy time for us at Solid Waste, so please do not trim your trees. Should you want to participate by trimming your trees, you're allowed up to three cubic yards of veg per week. We ask that you do not mix it with other debris, such as construction debris or any other things, household items, what have you. Vegetation needs to be in four-foot lengths. And again, please place it three feet away from anything that you don't want damaged. If you have any questions, please contact Solid Waste at Public Works. Phone number is 561-742-6200. And we are there Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:30.
Gary? Sir. Even if you have limbs that are close to electrical wires, which I've seen in some residents' yards, you recommend that you just leave them alone?
Well, when you have those issues, give us a call. There's a phone number you can call, and we like to have professionals trim those trees. And in most cases, FPL, we'll have somebody that can cut them for you. Unfortunately, it's not as quick as residents might like. They might say, "I have a problem. I'd like them trimmed today." But FPL is not quite that responsive. Thanks, Gary. You're welcome.
Gary, sir. Hi. First of all, congratulations on your new title.
Oh, thank you.
I just noticed that. In addition to the tires, I find that I see more mattresses than I see tires out on the street. Is there some sort of proper disposal for mattresses that we should let the public know? Because I see them all the time.
Yeah, if they put them out on the curb on bulk days, we will pick them up.
Okay, so no special procedure, just?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next announcement is for Hurricane Preparedness Information Session on Thursday, May 20th at 12 noon. Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager, will provide event details and how the public can register to attend. Laura, you currently have the floor.
Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager. Atlantic hurricane season begins on June 1st. To help prepare our residents and businesses, the City of Boynton Beach will be offering two informational virtual programs. The Hurricane Preparedness Info Session will take place on Thursday, May 20th, from 12 to 1 PM. Topics include information on shelters, generator safety, home and property preparation tips, and ADA services. Attendees will have the opportunity to ask panelists questions during the live session. Panelists include myself, Fire Rescue Assistant Chief Phil Mohorn, Fire Marshal Kathy Klein, Interim Public Works Director Gary Dunmire, Recreation Specialist Stephanie Soplop, and Palm Beach County Senior Planner Keith Wall. Questions may also be submitted in advance by emailing marketing@bbfl.us. The Boynton Beach City Library is offering a weather and hurricane preparedness webinar in conjunction with the National Weather Services Miami South Florida Forecast Office. It will take place on Tuesday, June 8th, from 6 PM to 7 PM. Topics include weather preparedness and hurricane awareness. Visit prepareboynton.com to access the registration links and find storm safety and preparation tips. Both programs will be recorded and made available on the city's YouTube page upon completion. In addition, the city will be participating in the Boynton Beach Mall's annual in-person hurricane expo on Saturday, May 22nd, from 12 to 3 PM. An ASL interpreter will be provided at all three programs. In addition, I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that Florida's Hurricane Sales Tax Holiday will take place on May 28th through June 6th. For more information, call 561-742-6010 or visit prepareboynton.com.
Thank you, Laura. And I also wanted to double check that if anybody who wants to be on our newsletter, they can sign up through our website, boynton-beach.org, or could they send you an email at marketing@bbfl.us? Is that correct?
That is correct. They can visit boynton-beach.org/newsletter to sign up themselves. Or if it's easier, they can email marketing@bbfl.us, and we will add them for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next announcement is by Recreation and Parks Director Casey Young regarding the Free Pet Vaccine Clinic for Dogs and Cats in partnership with the Justin Bartlett Animal Rescue Hospital at the Easal Hester Center on Saturday, May 29th, from 9 AM to 3 PM. Rescue Hospital at the Ezel Hester Center on Saturday, May 29th, from 9 AM to 3 PM.
I'm muted.
Casey, you have the floor.
I have the floor.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. I'm here to announce the Justin Bartlett Animal Hospital is hosting a free drive-through pet vaccine clinic at the Ezel Hester Center at 1901 North Seacrest Boulevard on Saturday, May 29th, from 9 AM to 3 PM. The clinic will provide a complete animal, a complete vaccine package, including rabies vaccination for dogs and cats. Dogs must be on a leash and cats must be in crates. For more information, contact Justin Bartlett Animal Hospital at 561-795-9999. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next last announcement regarding to Memorial Day, Mr. Young?
Yes, good evening again, Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. The Boynton Beach Veterans Task Force is hosting a Memorial Day Ceremony on Sunday, May 30th, at the Boynton Beach Memorial Cemetery at 16, at 1611 South Seacrest Boulevard. The ceremony is scheduled to start at 2 PM. Everyone is invited and welcome to attend the ceremony with the veterans, to honor our veterans.
Thank you very much. And then my last question that I had about that, May 22nd to the 28th was National Safe Boating Week. Do we, when is the drowning awareness week or month?
Well, May is actually National Water Safety Month. We did provide a proclamation and to recognize that at the first commission meeting for the start of summer. So we actually recognize May as National Water Safety Month.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more announcements, we will move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to a three-minute presentation. And please state your name and address for the record. If you are attending virtually, please raise your hand or ask a question, and I will call on you. Do we have anyone raising their hands?
Mayor Grant, this is Alan. I do not see any hands raised or questions asked in the GoToWebinar panel.
Oh, see, I saw one for Tom Warkey, and then it lowered. Almost, yep, it's up again. Tom, you're currently self muted. If you'd like to speak, please unmute and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Grant. My name is Tom Warkey. I live at 2780 Worcester Road, and I'm here to provide an update as the mayor requested at the last city commission meeting. I wanted to make the city commissioners aware of the fact that I'm the Executive Director of the Surfing Florida Museum, and we've been working for more than a year now to implement the proposal submitted last year by the Recreation and Parks Department to locate the Surfing Florida Museum in the historic Women's Club Building. In March of this year, the city assumed ownership of the building from CRA, and on March 11th, I submitted a detailed proposal to the Recreation and Parks Department at their request. On April 26th, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board meeting included a discussion of this subject on their agenda, including a PowerPoint presentation by myself and comments from prominent individuals, including Delray Beach Immediate Past Mayor Carrie Glickstein and Rod Falls, Director of the FAU University Galleries. The Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, excuse me, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board then enthusiastically recommended that the item be brought to the attention of the Boynton Beach City Manager for consideration. At the May 4th City Commission Meeting, the city manager placed the item on the June 1st Agenda for the city commission discussion. And also at that city commission meeting, there was discussion by Commissioners and the city manager about improving access to video recordings of board meetings, including the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board Meeting from the 26th. I volunteered to provide that recording, and since then, I have forwarded it to the mayor and the city manager for their review, and hopefully that can be part of the backup for the June 1st Agenda Item about the Surfing Florida Museum. So that's the timeline and review that the mayor requested that I provided this meeting. I can answer questions or just have that be provided to you as the update.
Laurie, are we going to have that on the June 1st meeting discussion, or? Is your green light on?
Um, we are taking a look at the proposal. I have not listened to the recording yet of the advisory meeting, but staff's going to be, as you and I had discussed, putting together some information on the operational cost of that facility. It's going to be an overall policy discussion the commission will be having on the use of that facility and the desire to produce revenues versus having the nonprofit located there. So we're going to give you some numbers to help you be able to discuss that and make that decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for public audience? Seeing none, we will now close public audience and move on to administrative. Appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. We have two regular and two alternate positions available on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We have three regular positions on the Citizens Oversight Committee. We have one alternate position available on the Education Youth Advisory Board. We have one regular position on the Employee Pension Board and an applicant. Commissioner Hay?
Mayor, I'd like to appoint Darrell Sanders to the Employee Pension Board.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We have one alternate position available on the Historic Resource Preservation Board. We have one regular position available on the Recreation and Parks Board, and we have one regular position available on the Senior Advisory Board. Now, as the city commission discuss and select Vice Mayor to serve until March 2022 municipal election. Based upon my conversation with the city manager and the city attorney, we have the two options of continuing with Vice Mayor Penzerga, or if Commissioner Hay would like to take the role for Vice Mayor.
I'll take it. If it's open, I'm it.
Do I have a second?
Yes, there is a second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next, we will move on to 5C, Consider the Protest Filed by Poseidon Dredge Marine Inc. for Invitation to Bid for Harvey E. Oyer Jr. Park Marina Boat Ramp Improvement Project. I do believe there's a presentation.
Yes, Mayor Grant, this is Alan. I'll pull the presentation up right now.
Thank you. And Jim, would you mind giving us a legal overview of what is going on? And make sure your green light's on.
Certainly, Mayor. Whenever there is a procurement matter, such as a bid or a request for proposals, and a party who participates in that process is displeased with the outcome, they do have the opportunity to challenge on technical grounds the manner in which the bid or the proposal itself was awarded. And that's the process that works its way through staff for a review, to the city attorney's office for a review, and then to the city manager for a review as well, who has the authority to refer it back to the city attorney's office for disposition. That was, that has all occurred. The applicant, excuse me, the proposer that was not successful was not satisfied with the outcome. They have the opportunity to make their case essentially to the city commission. That's the presentation that's going to occur tonight. The city commission has the authority to dispose of the bid protest, and the alternatives there would be to maintain the award as it was done previously by the commission, to reject all bids and re-advertise the boat ramp improvement project, or alternatively to uphold the protest and reject the award to Ansco Inc., that was who originally got it, and award it to the secondary responsive bidder, which is Poseidon Dredge and Marine.
So allow the applicant, or the, yep, protester to make their presentation. I'll ask any other applicants to have, sorry. The protester give their presentation. I'll have the city commission provide any questions or comments. Allow for the applicant that did receive the winning bid to make any sort of comments, and then have the city commission decide. So if you'd like to begin?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tim Taylor. I represent Poseidon Dredge Marine. Tonight, I have with me Javier Cubedo, who is the Director of Operations at Poseidon, as well as Peter Cole, who's the Vice President of Poseidon. We're here on a bid protest for the Harvey Oyer Jr. Park Marina Boat Ramp Improvement Project. And to give just background, because it's critical to this bid protest, this is a marine improvement project involving the rehabilitation and installation of four boat ramps, three floating docks, relocation of coral. It is a marine contracting project. Now, Poseidon Dredge Marine is a marine contractor. Ansco, it's our position, as you'll see through this presentation, is not a marine contractor, and we'll show that's why they are not a responsible and responsive bidder. If the AV crew, if they could please go to the next slide. All right, what you see there is the cover sheet to the invitation to bid. That's critical in this analysis because it shows the qualifications that must be met when bidding this job by any potential bidders for this project. Next slide, please. Thank you. This, according to the invitation to bid, it's important to understand what the definitions of a responsible bidder and a responsive bidder are, and that's found in Article 1. Responsible bidder is an individual or business that has submitted a bid, offered proposal, quotation or response, which has the capability in all respects to perform fully the contract requirements and the integrity and reliability which will give reasonable assurance of good faith and performance. Responsive bidder is a contractor, individual or business that has submitted a bid, offered proposal, quotation or response, which conforms in all material respects of solicitation, including but not limited to compliance with any WMBE requirements contained in this solicitation. So let's go through the invitation to bid, and let's look at what the qualifications were. Next slide, please. Under page 10, section 3, it's paragraph 24, the qualifications of bidders. Quote, "The city will only consider solicitation responses from firms normally engaged in performing the type of work specified within the contract documents." And as I previously stated, this is a boat ramp improvement project or marine construction. Next slide, please. Under same page, page 10, section 3 of paragraph 25, disqualification of bidders. It states, "More than one bid from an individual firm, partnership, corporation, or association in the same or different name shall not be considered. All bids shall be rejected if there is a reason to believe that collusion exists between bidders." And here's the important part. Automatic disqualifiers are as follows. Subsection D, not completing the bid supplemental forms is required. And I'm going to get into how Ansco completed their bid supplemental forms. Next page, please. Under page 9, section 3, paragraph 22, has the standards. It states, "Factors to be considered in determining whether the standard of responsibility has been met include whether prospective bidder has," go to subsection D, "supplied all necessary information in connection with the inquiry concerning responsibility." Next, next slide, please. Now, these, under the invitation to bid, are the contractor qualifications required in order to bid this job. Starts up from page 1. Says, "The firm must have successfully completed similar projects, meeting the following requirements." It says, "A minimum of at least three projects at a minimum of $350,000 per project completed annually for each of the past three calendar years, 2018, 2019, 2020." Says, "The firm must itemize its work using forms under work history for calendar year 2018, 19, and 20." Next, next slide, please. Moreover, you must have references. This states, "You must provide three references from customers that you've contracted with to provide boat ramp improvements. This is a requirement in order to bid the job." Says, "Note, the information requested must include current contact name, phone number, and email addresses for each reference." So now I'm going to take you through Ansco's bid. Next slide, please. Under Ansco's work history, they provided three projects per year for 18, 19, and 20. However, you'll note, not a single one of these projects is similar nature. None of them are marine contracting jobs. Also, none of them are boat ramp improvement jobs. They have completely failed to identify a single project in their work history that satisfies the bid requirements for responsibility in order to perform this marine contracting work. If you look at the work they performed, it's utility work, it's airport work, it's site work. None of it is marine contracting. And we contend first, just in the work history alone, they have failed to make their case in their bid documents to show that they have the history of work to bid this job for marine contract. Next slide, please. Then we get into Ansco's references. As you'll recall, I showed you where they had to have three references that dealt with boat ramp improvements. If you look at this slide, not only did they not provide any boat ramp improvement projects, not a single one of these references are for marine contracting or boat ramp improvements, but additionally, it says, "The city is interested in learning of other experience with your firm. As such, please do not list the city of Boynton as a reference." That's a requirement. Do not list them. The first reference is a city of Boynton Beach project with the agency contact of Gail Moots. Now, this is a problem because they've listed the city of Boynton Beach. This is an automatic disqualifier, but if you want to overlook that, they don't have any boat ramp improvement projects because they're not a marine contractor. Then we look at, how was this project awarded? If the work history wasn't complied with, if the references aren't complied with. Next slide, please. Well, Ms. Moots is the individual that awarded the job, and she determined that Ansco was the lowest, most responsible bidder. I don't know how that can happen if Ms. Moots herself is identified as a reference, which is prohibited under these bid documents. This should have been immediately disqualified, and this should have been looked at and awarded to the next lowest responsible bidder, which is Palm Beach Poseidon Dredge Marine. Next slide, please. I wanted to give you a case out of this district. It's the Fourth District Court of Appeal where the city of Boynton Beach is at, to let you know how the courts interpret this kind of bid protest and how they, how they look at these things legally. And this is a case involving American Engineering and Development versus Town of Highland Beach. In this case, American Engineering and Development was the lowest bidder, but they didn't comply with the bid documents. They didn't provide any projects that were performed for municipalities. They didn't provide any projects where they were identified as the general contractor. And the analysis is just what I went through with you, with you all. The court looked at first, what is a responsible bidder? And I just quoted a couple of things from the court. Says, "A responsible or qualified bidder is one who has the capability in all respects to fully perform the contract requirements and the integrity and reliability that will assure good faith performance." Do you recall, that's the same definition that's in the invitation to bid that I put up in this PowerPoint. I wanted you to see that this is the same definition and same application. It goes on to state, "Responsible bidder is one that has submitted..." It goes on to state, "Responsible bidder is one that has submitted a bid proposal or reply that conforms in all material respects of solicitation." Once again, the same definition that's in your invitation to bid. And the court found, in this appeal, American Engineering did not meet the bid specifications. American Engineering did not list projects performed for municipalities or projects on which it was the prime contractor as the bidding specifications required. Therefore, American Engineering was not a responsive bidder. We have the same situation here. We have, unfortunately, Ansco, the low bidder, but it was not a responsive bidder and not responsible pursuant to the specifications in the invitation to bid. And because of that, their bid should have been rejected. And the city of Boynton Beach should move on to the next lowest responsible bidder. Next slide, please. So I, I agree with the counsel for the city of Boynton Beach at what are the current options? We could either maintain the current award to Ansco, which at that point leave my client with the only option to seek remedies in the court. You could reject all the bids and re-advertise the boat ramp improvement project. However, in this construction climate, we all know that that's going to lead to extremely high increased costs, material supply cost and escalation. Or uphold, uphold this bid protest, reject the award to Ansco and award it to the next lowest responsible bidder, which is Poseidon Dredge Marine. Now, it's our position that option three would be the correct thing to do. My client is more than willing to move forward with the bid as provided, and for the cost that they bid this job for. And we would respectfully request this commission find that Ansco was not a responsive, responsible bidder, and reject their bid. But thank you.
Thank you. I did have a question. You talked about the qualifications. Is there a special license from the Department of Business and Professional Regulations to be a marine contractor?
Well, you have to have a certain license for permitting. It, it, once you're on the water and you have environmental permits you got to pull. Nobody's debating that Ansco has got a general contractor's license. To the extent that there's going to be some specialty environmental permits or otherwise, you may need additional licensure. But at this, but at this point, other than a general contractor's license, I don't know enough about what the, let's say, the environmental.
I'm asking your, your client.
Oh, as to my client?
Yes.
He's got all the required licenses as a marine contractor that a marine contractor needs.
Okay, and who is that, the person's name that has the marine contractor?
Javier Cuevado.
How do you spell that?
Last name, Q U E V E D O. He's a qualifier for Poseidon.
Q U E D O. Okay, thank you.
Q U E V E D O.
All right, I can look that up. All right, do we have someone from Ansco here?
Good afternoon. I'm John Zach, President of Ansco.
Into the microphone, please.
Good afternoon. I'm John Zach, President of Ansco. And I'm glad to be here. What I'd like to say is that I, since 2014, have completed 42 projects for the city of Boynton Beach, including you just awarded me another Oyer Park project, which makes it number 43. So I've worked in that park ever since 2014. I put a bid in. I'm a licensed general contractor. There is no special license is done. I'm very familiar with working with the city of Boynton Beach. Yes, I listed you as a, as, you know, recommendation for the simple fact, do 42 projects for a city in seven years. I got to be doing something right, number one. Number two, I didn't have a chance to look at Poseidon's bid, but when they put down the list of subcontractors and material suppliers, it said to be determined. That makes the bid invalid. Sorry, guys. You have to list that in there. And it was very adamant in the addendums that we can only use a certain supplier, Golden Marine, and that's what I listed as my supplier. They did not. The fact is, all I can say is, you know, I filed the documents correctly. And all the work that I do is Ansco Inc. is all government related, and I only have seven clients. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, John. And so, I mean, the, the quick question is, is that you have done marine dredging work before?
Yeah, I've, I've, I've done bridge work and water work, and bridge is related work.
So where have you done that?
Well, I, I raised the bridges. I fixed the bridges in Ocean Ridge. I just finished with Keywood doing the Camino Real Bridge. So, and, you know, my experience since I graduated in 77 has been bridge work and highway work, so.
And then the ramp as well?
Yeah, and then, and I got to tell you, the ramp is a concrete steel project with a supplier that's going to supply the, the marine equipment. And I have boat lifts and docks, who's my subcontractors that's going to be installing that, who is a licensed general contractor also.
Thank you, Chair. It's Mayor at this meeting. It's Mayor at this meeting.
Oh, that's right, Mayor. Not the CRA. I do have a question for the gentleman here. One of the points made by the previous speaker was that you did not list your previous marine projects. Why did you not list your previous marine projects for?
I listed government projects, yes. And, you know, it's a marine, I didn't, some of my older projects, they were done in 2013, 2014, and 2015.
So you're saying that simply because of time, you did not list them?
Exactly. I can't, they said to list them in the last three years. And, you know, I haven't completed some of those projects earlier. So, but I did not meet the qualifications in 17, I mean, I think it was 18, 19, and 20.
Could you address the question regarding the references?
Yes.
Why did you use the city when?
You know, that was just something I missed. Sorry. If, if you've ever done the bid documents that you have now, we do them online. They are very, very complicated. If you know the new, the new system that you're using. So I listed those. I had them handwritten, but I actually had to go type everything in. It took me a couple hours to put the bid together. So it was, it was a little bit confusing. It was the first time that I had done that type of bid with the city of Boynton Beach. Most of the time, I just send them in, email them, and that's it, or drop them off. But since the COVID, we haven't been able to do that. So it was, it's very time consuming. Took me two hours to put that package together. Where normally I would handwrite, I could probably have it done within an hour.
John, if you had to substitute someone for the city, would you have another reference?
Oh, I, for, for the city of Boynton Beach? Sure, I have Palm Beach County. I didn't list them. I didn't list the city of Boca Raton and the city of Coral Springs, but I also have Palm Beach County. And, you know, I, I, and I also have what they call Turtle Run, which is a community development, but it is a government agency. It's actually called Government Management Services.
Thank you. Commissioner Katz. Question to the city attorney. The, the challenging party referred to the submission of Boynton Beach as a reference, as a disqualifying factor. Is that, what is the city's position as to whether or not that error, or whatever you want to call it, is in itself disqualifying of the entire bid?
I found that it was not a disqualifying component of the bid.
What would it be characterized as?
Something that the commission could waive in the award of bid, insubstantial.
And that's a, a process that happens from time to time?
It does happen from time to time. The commission has waived formalities of bids and invitations to bid in the past.
Thank you. So is there any other questions from the commission, from either the protester or the successful bidder? Yes, Commissioner Katz.
I guess to the, the city attorney, I see the list of options that are outlined. Is it the recommendation, I mean, by virtue of your denial of the protest, is it the recommendation of, of city staff and the city attorney to proceed with the accepted bidder?
The Finance Director concluded that the, the protest was, could not be sustained. Moved on to the city attorney's office for review. The same finding. I think you could take that as our, our recommendation that the protest could be rejected.
Thank you. I would request a motion from the, the commission in regards to, I guess, the, the three options that we have, to put something in the affirmative. The, the way I see it is, is that the protester is correct. The, the applicant did not fill out the, the form correctly. And is that, according to our legal determination, it is not a disqualifying event? However, it is something that we requested that was not there. And based upon their presentation, they filled out the application to the best of their ability, which I would see is what the city required and requested. The, the contrary thing is that we as the keepers and investors of the taxpayer dollars, we normally award it to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. And, you know, the determination from the staff is stating that Ansco is responsible and responsive, that the errors made in the application does not disqualify them. And so it is up to us to accept that determination, that it is not a disqualifying event, that there... However, you know, for me, you know, there's a clause in the conflict of interest about what, that there's supposed to be no connection between bidder and the city of Boynton Beach. And they're supposed to disclose everything, that, any connection, if there is any. And that's kind of where I'm in that interpretation, is that we would want to make sure that people follow the directions that we have, because if we don't, then what's the point of the directions? You know, I understand this is a screener's error, so, you know, my two option would be to reject all bids and re-advertise, or to uphold the protest, because based upon the evidence that is provided, they failed to give us the three references. They failed to give the three government contracts regarding marine work in the last three years, which were part of the requirements. That is my interpretation.
Mayor?
Yes.
The way I see it, we have already set a precedence as far as waiving such items as the situation that, that has happened. I do think that Ansco is a responsible and responsive bidder. And they're the lowest, of course. But that's why I asked him about naming others. And he rattled off a long list of ones he could have put on there. Those things happen. I understand what you're saying, but we've already gone this route before. And we have waived, overlooked, and I don't want to say overlooked, but we have made a decision that that was not enough based on all the other good that they are offering to disqualify them. So as far as I'm concerned, I, I feel that we should deny the board, the board, the bid protest, deny the bid protest. That's where I am.
Oh, if that would be the case, I would request a motion to maintain the current award to Ansco Inc.
Yes.
Are you making that motion?
I believe that. Is that number one?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question for staff. Given that Ansco did not cite previous marine projects as part of their work history for the application, has staff evaluated their previous marine projects?
So as part of the bid, you know, there's a two, there's a two-step process. You have the procurement aspect, which the procurement staff goes to determine whether the bid is actually qualified or non-qualified. They deemed it qualified. And then our staff, public work staff, did review the qualifications to a previous work experience. So they're, they did look into the subcontracted work of the dock. I don't remember the name of the actual subcontractor that Ansco is working, using. And they did review that, yes. As well as, I do believe they remedied the, the third reference. That's typically something that we would do if there was an error and that, that could be remedied. That, that is something that would typically done. I believe that we have, that they did submit a third reference to, to the Finance Department.
Okay, so let me just state my concern. Because, you know, marine projects were not listed in the work history. Staff evaluated what they could in the document, but they were not the marine projects. I just need to be assured that this particular applicant, Ansco, has successful marine projects that have been vetted by our staff. But if they were not listed, only what was listed was vetted. So you're saying that their previous marine history in conducting these projects have not been evaluated, because they were not listed?
We reviewed the projects that they did list.
I understand that, but what about marine projects? Because that's what's relevant here.
The, the, the projects that we reviewed further would have been through their subcontractor, which is typical for a, a general contractor, to hire a subcontractor to fulfill those requirements.
Right.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Katz.
To Andrew, and in, in referring to those subcontractors and their work, were, were those specific examples relative to marine projects?
Yeah, Dox and Moore is a marine contractor. They just, they're working as a sub to Ansco, yes.
Okay, so that, would it be correct to say that the projects listed might not have been in their totality marine project? But you're saying that through subcontracting and a portion of whatever the projects were in some cases, those were marine projects? And you said you did vet?
So one of the things that I think Mr. Mr. Zach had mentioned was that a lot of this project is done with, is done as concrete. You know, you have the actual slab, and then you have a floating dock that goes with it. So they are doing self-performing that concrete work, which is typically what we evaluated through those other projects, like you mentioned, through the, the, the bridge work or any of that type of marine work. The work that he has, he's done for us and through these bids, is that typical work, that concrete, they self-perform concrete work. So some of the specific, marine-specific stuff that are required through the contract, like the environmental stuff that is specified to that exact contractor, Golden Marine, they, those are the subcontractors they're using. Dox and Moore, I believe, is the one. I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact name of the subcontractor.
Subcontractor I used, boat lifts and docks. I also used a subcontractor for the coral relocation, which is located in Boynton Beach, which is Tetra, which they pulled a permit, the environmental and everything else. So I do subcontract. As a general contractor, I do perform my own concrete work and site work. But I do hire subcontractors that are experienced in putting in the, the marine equipment and, and doing that type of work and doing the coral relocation. And those were listed in my subcontractors.
That is important to know. Thank you.
Welcome.
So you, would you like to come to the podium? And please state your name, address, and qualifications.
Here, Javier Cuevado. I'm the qualifier for the Poseidon dredging marine. This is a boat ramp, not a concrete slab. This slab is to be poured underwater. This is not a typical concrete rebar for it. See you later. Goodbye. There's a cofferdam that's involved. There's de-watering. There's all sorts of things. I don't believe his subcontractor either, neither has a boat ramp, as quoted, experience. I mean, I'd be happy to look at him and, you know, review him, but to this day, we have not seen one boat ramp. Big difference between boat lifts and pilings, boat ramp.
And so my other question is, is that would you also use the subcontractor for the environmental?
Environmental? The coral relocation?
Yes.
We'd have to see the magnitude of the specs. I don't recall exactly. We would use Tetra Tech.
Yes, Commissioner Katz. Question for Javier Covedo. The appropriate party from your party. The awarded bidder referenced in your application that you had to be determined, basically there was a missing information subsequent to the...
No, that's incorrect. The bid documents, if I remember correctly, we are exclusively to use Golden Manufacturing, which is who, we, there's, that's who we're using. There is no reason to list a vendor that they already told you you're using.
Thank you. You know, part of it is that, you know, I also looked up online. Poseidon dredge marine has a fully, you know, marine-style website with everything that you would want to have on a website, whereas Ansco does not. I don't know if that puts in any opinion for anyone, but it's kind of in the sense of that they specialize in seawalls, boat lifts, dredging docks, tug and barge support, where Ansco is more of a general contractor, as they listed all the different types of concrete work throughout the county and South Florida area, but not the specialization. I know, I believe, Andrew, we said we are going to have the ability to review the environmental permits that are coming up. And I guess it would be through the subcontractor. So that's something that is important to me, because I remember seeing the stone crabs that are there and, you know, the baby stone crab. So I want to make sure that we are hiring the right contractor who's overseeing the subcontractor. And, you know, the website kind of makes a difference to me. And that's, that's kind of where I'm at with the Poseidon. Because it's, it's more of a specialized contractor that we're trying to hire for this, not just bridges. Commissioner Katz?
So, the first thing I'll say is that I do appreciate everyone coming in and, you know, expressing their positions, because while we can, we can speak to staff, we can review documents, it certainly helps to hear from, directly from, you know, the bidders in this case. I understand the concerns raised by the protesting party. So I guess it comes down to three points for me. First and foremost, the error as it relates to putting a reference that should not have been included per what was stated by legal. That does happen from time to time, and that there is precedent that when that happens, the Commission can reflect on the fact that an error was made. In addition, Andrew Mack stated that, and I guess, could you reaffirm that? That they did, when that error was pointed out to them, replace that with another reference that was suitable?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Okay, so as best I can tell, like, I have to rely on our staff and our experts from a legal perspective. Everything I've been told today says that to continue forward with the accepted bidder is in accord with, with normal practice, given these situations. Our, Andrew Mack, our Assistant City Manager, who has experience in developing and public works and all that, spoke to vetting the references or the projects that were cited in the subcontractors and that, that in his expert opinion, Andrew, I guess, could you restate it for me? That you believe, based on the review of those subcontractors, that the, the winning bid is capable of doing the work in this project?
Yes, based on the qualifications of the prime, which is the general contractor and the subcontractors that they've listed in their bid, I do feel comfortable that this company can perform, yes.
Okay, so, and not even understanding there are cost implications to the city. My, that's not really a factor for me, because my sole pursuit here is to make sure that we're doing what is right and what is legal, based on what our attorney and our city staff have presented to us. I wouldn't feel comfortable overturning their determination today based on brief presentations. So at this point in time, and I am sympathetic to the concerns that were raised, based on the guidance that we've been provided and conversations that I've had on this item, I'm confident that we are in a position to move forward with the accepted bid. So I would, if there was a motion on the table by Commissioner Hay, I would second that.
Do recognize that we do only have four people. And so the motion to, the affirmative to uphold, we would need a majority, is that correct?
Pardon me? Two, two-two is a denial.
Correct.
The motion would fail.
And so, and so that's kind of where, we'll see what happens. All right, if there's no further comments, everyone in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state so by saying nay.
Nay.
So that doesn't pass. And so...
You're not, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But, you know, the question is, is that we would have to have a motion to uphold the protest. You know?
We're not going anywhere.
Or alternatively, you would have the motion to reject the bids and re-advertise and start the process, maybe not from the very beginning, but pretty near the very beginning. And then some of these issues that the Commission has raised this evening, obviously, staff would focus on those issues in moving forward. Recommendation for you on the next go-around.
Yes, Commissioner Katz?
For, question for the City Attorney. If, if that were the will of the Commission to, to reject all bids and re-advertise, obviously, there's time and cost implications associated with that. But from a legal perspective, does that mean that this basically is null and void? And that any concerns any party had relative to this are moot? And there's no legal action that could be taken? And everyone would simply have to resubmit and re-engage in the process?
Commission has the right to reject the bids and start over again. With respect to your question, your sub-question there about whether there could be a legal challenge of that? The answer to that question in all circumstances is always yes. We can't control what people have prepared to file in court to perpetuate their point of view.
So I guess my, the final point I'll make, unless something else is stated that changes my mind, is that I'm, I'm not at a, at a point where I would be interested in upholding the protest. I just voted, you know, to affirm the winning bid. And given what was just stated by the City Attorney, that it really doesn't, rejecting all bids wouldn't really absolve any hypothetical concerns that were raised or potential legal action. I just, that doesn't, rejecting all the bids doesn't seem to address anything. So I'm kind of stuck on my current position where I'm at.
So, my, I forgot to ask this regarding the grant that we are supposedly receiving. Is there an expiration for that grant?
Yes, I believe the, the outside date is September 2022.
Okay.
We have to have the funds spent and reimbursement by then.
So that, we do have the timeframe to do that within that?
Yes.
Mayor, it just seems to me that, I don't know, maybe legal can kind of help me out here. It seems kind of unfair now that everybody knows what the other one, you know, bid it. I mean, right now, we're talking a difference of all, close to $113,000 between protester and the lowest bidder. That would be, I probably wouldn't trust the new figures less than I do these. But would that not, how can that be a positive going down the road to open this up again? And it's already known what, what, what the other one is going to, the ballpark, what they're doing. I mean, this... Commissioner, I can't speak to whether that's a positive or not. It may cost more money when you go out to bid, but it's not unusual for that to occur. The positive aspect of rejecting the bids and going back out is with respect to the integrity of the public procurement process. So, you know, you're demonstrating to the public that in the event of a protest, which is permitted under our procedures and essentially everywhere, that if somebody makes a case and issues are raised, you have the right to reject all bids. You don't have to award the contract. You may have found that in having listened to all of it, that you find some inconsistencies in the way that it was processed. You're starting over, and I would expect that if it returns to the Commission, that all those inconsistencies will be resolved. So that's, that to me is the positive side of it. And of course, the, the three that, bidders that we had could resubmit with different figures if they wanted to. Yes, sir. Or they could not, or they could not.
So, the fact is, is that with the motion that we had to maintain the current award not passing, we have the two options remaining of upholding the protest to move forward with Poseidon dredge marine, or the third option is to reject all bids and re-advertise. And the fourth option is to do nothing, and we'll have a lot of mess on our hands over at the boat ramp park.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Can we verify with, with the Finance Director as far as the third option? Because I don't believe, I believe this is an invitation to bid, and there is no room for awarding past the lowest bid. Can, can we get the Finance Director or the purchasing manager?
I mean, I read the invitation to bid, and it says that the lowest bidder does not necessarily mean that they're selected. But if you want to get, Ms. Projector?
Just like to clarify that.
And Commissioners, Mark Fredrickson, Finance Director. With regard to the other option, we did give that as an option. So, yes, if they reject this one as being non-responsive, they can award to the second bidder.
Thank you.
So, yes, Commissioner Katz?
Final question, I guess, to Andrew with relations to the deadline for the grant. If we were to take action to reject all bids tonight, how quickly could this be reissued as an RFP and the process run to select?
I think, I think that would be, we could do it in 30 to 45 days. I think we could advertise the bid and then open the bids and then bring it back to you within 45 days, 60 at the most, which would still leave us within the construction timeframe that we need.
So what, um, so that, so that's your statement? That if action were taken today to reject and reissue the RFP, we would definitively have time to still qualify?
I wouldn't use definitive, because we don't know the future, but it is a possibility.
Correct. If you look at it in just the calendar, it would fit within the calendar. I think one of the biggest things that we were looking at was, because there will be, as a part of this, there will be a closure of the ramp. There's something that we did not anticipate until they actually got into the bid process. It was one of the things that was discussed at the pre-bid meetings, at the pre-bid meeting. So the closure of the ramp, we were trying to coordinate with the beginning of October, but at this point, that's not going to happen. So we're going to prorate the parking permits for wherever the mount, which is, right now, is about two months, there'll be a two-month closure. So we'll just prorate the permits for that timeframe, so we can start anytime within the calendar year.
Yes. Commissioner Pennsor? So, let me just state my position on this, and it's the, possibly the unpopular one here. And I support the protest, because if we reject this bid, let's first ask ourselves, what exactly do we expect to see happen here? The reality is, the current applicant, Ansco, did not complete the ITN, is that what it's called?
ITV.
ITV, correctly. They may be judged to be inconsequential, but to me, it's alarming when you don't cite all of your references. That is not a good indicator. Number two, if subcontractors were the only thing that mattered, then maybe we should just do ITVs for subcontractors. And, you know, this is a very special project in a very special part of our city. And when you have something this important, I would like to have someone who is a specialist in doing these types of projects. That, to me, may be worth the additional expense. So, in this particular situation, you know, I'm willing to push the cost just a little bit higher because of the value of this location, the expertise and the experience that the protester brings. And quite frankly, I'm not sure if anything significant would come out of re-advertising this ITN.
So, if that's the case, would you put a motion out to reject all bids and reissue the ITV? I think he's in favor. Okay, so...
I thought it was the third option.
So if that is what you're saying, you'd have to, would you make that motion then?
Mayor?
Yeah.
May I ask one question? One of the things that was brought to my attention was the qualifier for Poseidon, I think it used to be the qualifier for a company that did business with the city. Can we get clarification from the qualifier?
Mr. Covedo?
Can, can you answer, were you actually the qualifier for Palm Beach Marine and did work for the city previously?
Come on, Michael, please.
That's correct.
So you were the qualifier for the company that did the project, the Oceanfront Park? And what was the outcome of that park?
I don't recall the Oceanfront Park.
You were the qualifier for Palm Beach Marine?
Yeah, but there were two different qualifiers. There was Siron Atkins, which is an owner of Palm Beach Marine, and there was me, and I was also an owner.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't think I was the qualifier for that park. I, but I'm not, I'd have to go back and check, we did many projects.
And the reason I'm asking is, the Palm Beach Marine was a company that did a project for us at Oceanfront Park, which we had them, they went bankrupt through the city, during the project.
Oh, why wait till the end? So, Palm Beach?
It's only relevant to what you're about to do, which was a ward to him. So I want to make sure that you have all the facts. And I don't, I had, I can only go off of what he's telling me. I don't know if he was the qualifier or not, whether it was a secondary, but it is, it is a part of their history.
How many years ago was that?
I think it was right when I started, right in 2010, somewhere in that timeframe.
Because there's a new Palm Beach Marine Inc., or is that a different?
In light of the fact, I'm no longer comfortable putting forward that motion. I'd require more time to evaluate the situation.
Mayor? Yes, Commissioner Katz?
So, given everything, I think that the cleanest, most prudent, most fair way to proceed is to reject all bids and as quickly as possible reissue and allow the process to be done cleanly, even if, one, to get further information, two, because the concerns raised by the protest, they have raised concerns. I think the cleanest way to do it is to reset and reissue. So I would be willing to make that motion at this time to reject all bids and reissue.
And I will second...
Second that with the comment.
Yes. Vice Mayor?
As much as I do not want to do that, but I have to agree with Commissioner Cash. At this stage of the game, it would be the cleanest thing to do, based on what we have discussed here. So I'm going to second that, and, and hopefully, we can move forward and get things back in time. Now, remind me again, Andrew, the, the timeline for the grant. We still would be able to have within those guidelines?
The outside date for the grant is September 2022. So I'm pretty confident that we can advertise, rebid it, open the bids and award, and still, and still make that date.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I share your sentiment. That is not necessarily what I want to do, and certainly the delay of the project and the effect on the season is not desirous, but I, I do think with my vote and with your second, I think you agree that it's better to do things cleanly, what we believe to be cleanly, than to to weigh that more so.
I do agree. All right. And I think that as well. So all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. I'd like to thank all the bidders and look forward to a future bid from you. Moving on to consent agenda, I'd like to pull item six B.
Then Baker. Yeah, so would I. I would also like to pull, oh, you finished?
Oh, yeah, I'm finished.
I would also like to pull item E as in Ethel. And item I as in Irene. That's it for me.
Okay. Start with item six B. Authorized utilizing state law enforcement trust fund monies in the amount of fifteen thousand for the purchase of gift cards and other weapons safety products to incentivize and encourage firearm owners to safely dispose of unwanted firearms during gun buyback events. Do we have someone from the police department to provide us with a little more information?
Yes, Mayor. The police chief is ready.
Okay. Chief Gregory, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, City Manager. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this particular topic. This is a new strategy for the Boynton Beach Police Department, but it's not a new concept. You may have seen this gun buyback programs in other cities and other locations. We're bringing it here for the first time where we're able to encourage folks who have firearms that are no longer wanted. They may have had a relative that belonged to when they moved away or passed on, and they have this firearm at home that they don't have a use for or don't, or for whatever reason, they no longer need it or want it and just want to dispose of it legally. And this is giving them an opportunity to voluntarily come forward and dispose the firearm with the police department. They will receive a gift card, as mentioned in the memo, depending on the size of the firearm and its potential value from the folks who turned it in. So there's a incentive on that perspective to do that. We also want to utilize a a educational approach. So as folks are there and they may have other firearms at home, and they're just getting rid of this particular one, or what the case may be, we'll have some flyers that we'll pass out about gun safety. And we'd also like to, if they have other firearms that are needed, like a trigger lock or a gun safety device, we may have some of those on hand as well to distribute to people who have other firearms at home and need some assistance with trying to secure it. So there's an education component as well as a disposal component for the firearms. And that's the, that's the high level gist of what we're trying to accomplish, to take these firearms off the street, prevent them from being stolen and falling into wrong hands or potentially leading to a tragedy at home like when the folks didn't need the firearm there anymore.
And thank you, Chief. You know, this is Mental Health Awareness Month. And this is something that we, you know, the less guns in the neighborhood, there's less likely for the guns to be fired. So I thank you for starting this program here in the city of Boynton Beach, and I'll be in favor of it.
Thank you very much.
Chief, Chief Gregory.
Yes, sir.
I, the gift cards, I, I understood, but I think I heard you say something about safety locks. I didn't quite know what the weapon safety products were. I wanted you to give some examples, but I did hear you say something about a safety lock. Is that?
Yes, depending on the type of firearm, there are safety devices that can be utilized to, one, either prevent the trigger, like what they call a trigger lock, prevent the trigger from being activated with that type of a device, or they have the other ones that you can push through the barrel and prevent it from the hammer from activating anything in the, in the chamber, placing anything in the chamber for that matter, because there's a obstruction in there. So we'll look at what we have available and/or we can procure quickly enough for this event and our next ones to have those types of devices available to those people who are coming to turn in firearms.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
My pleasure.
Mayor, yes, I have a question for the chief. Chief, thank you for leading this initiative. This is a very important thing for the city. Related to what Vice Mayor Hay has just asked regarding the locks, we know that safe gun storage is a major issue. And there are many incidents that happen as a result of improper storage. Are we doing anything on that front? Or is that something you're interested in the future?
We can look at providing additional information for its storage purposes. That gets a little bit more expensive for the, for creeping a safe at home or some sort of a container. The ones that are rated for firearms and depending on the size of your firearm can get a little more expensive for us, but we can certainly look to provide references to where folks can go and shop for that type of storage container. Right now, we're only talking about gun locks and safety components that will make your firearm unusable unless you unlock it or take that device off of it while at home to keep it safe from falling in kids' hands or anything else of that nature or someone unwittingly getting access to it at home. This isn't going to secure it as far as locking it into a box or something like that. So that's something else that we can look at local gun shops that have those available and can provide a list perhaps to people who come up that are interested in some sort of storage device.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Very well.
May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is six E. Approve a change order to purchase order with Globotech in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars to perform a disinfection by product study at the East Water Treatment Plant. Upon approval of the change order, the revised total purchase amount will be fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-four dollars.
Yeah, I had this one pulled, Mayor, just looking at the numbers and wondering what's going on. You know, twenty-eight thousand plus. I was wondering, do we have a problem at our East Water Treatment Plant? Or we just going to look at this new, is it a new method that we're going to look at? Why are we doing this disinfection byproduct study?
Mayor, we have Utility Director Joe Paterniti available to speak to the matter.
Okay, thank you. Joe, are you there?
Alan, can you unmute Joe?
Well, thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Hay. This is Joe Paterniti, Utility Director. Because the utility uses groundwater as our water supply for treatment, we fall under the groundwater rule. And the groundwater rule, we are currently meeting the groundwater rule. Or we sample our raw water wells and meet the requirements. But every once in a while, we do have a hit for a fecal coliform bacteria, which may trigger a public notification or a risk, a very, very low potential risk. We had Global Tech review the options to going to a four-log disinfection, which is a high-level disinfection process at the East Water Treatment Plant. We studied three options, and they came up with an option of extending the time that the chlorine is in contact with the finished water. This, that portion of the project has been completed. This change order is for the to study the new application point of the disinfection to make sure it doesn't create any disinfection byproducts that could be hazardous. So basically, what we're doing is we're trying to provide a higher level of safety and disinfection of the finished water. And we just want to make sure with this disinfection byproduct evaluation that the change won't have any ill effects to the final drinking water.
Yeah, because we do have a high-quality drinking water. I want to make sure we maintain that. I appreciate that. I was watching TV the other day and we, I saw a water treatment plant. It was a lot like our East plant. And they were talking about some new methodology of testing. And I thought that maybe this is what you were doing is utilizing this, this new technique. I didn't understand it all, but, but I'm glad you explained it. I do have a little bit better knowledge of it now, Joe. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on.
Mayor, I'm sorry. This is Crystal. I just wanted to check who seconded Vice Mayor Hayes' motion.
I believe I heard Commissioner Katz.
Okay, thank you.
I don't believe I did, but I will.
Credit for it.
All right. I heard it. Might have said it.
Think I said it from back here.
You made some noise. Let's put it that way. All right. Thank you, Crystal.
Yep.
Moving on to item six I, Propose Resolution twenty-one dash zero four six. Approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency for improvements to the Sarah Sims Park Amphitheater.
Yeah, I had this one pulled because, as you know, this is one that's very dear to my heart. I wanted to get a status on where we are. I know we have Juneteenth that's coming up next month and to get some sort of understanding of what the timeline is moving forward.
Yes, Commissioner Hayes, this is Gary Dunmire, interim director, Public Works in Engineering. Good morning. This project is in the process of being permitted now. It's, it's been designed. It's been through one round of comments with the structural engineer and the building department. So it was in decent enough shape to go out to bid. So now we're ready to move forward with that. The project is slated to start the day after the Fourth of July celebration. So it'll start on the sixth. It'll take about a hundred and twenty days. So I suspect we'll be done in October.
Can I get a copy of the final? What it looks like?
It's actually in the bid packet. If you look in the bid packet, the design is in the big packet. Yes, sir.
Okay. With all the nice colors and everything.
And in the interlocal agreement? Or is it in the resolution?
It should be, it should be with the interlocal agreement towards the end of that.
Okay. Alan, can you pull that up?
Yeah. And I'm also happy to send this to you tomorrow morning.
Could we pull it up and?
Turn the back. There you go.
So I know that there's a plan for the MLK committees in regards to the I Have a Dream speech.
Thinking at August twenty-eighth.
And so that will mean that that will not be available to be at Sarah Sims. Are we going to plan to have that at our amphitheater? I guess Lori is.
Actually, just thought of that because I just learned that we're doing that on August twenty-eighth, Mayor, and that's supposed to be at Sarah Sims Park. So I don't, Eleanor is available if we can maybe unmute her and let her, let us know what those plans are because that may affect the timeline on this.
How long is the construction slated for, Gary?
It's a hundred and twenty days.
So from the day we start, it'll be a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah, and this is August twenty-eighth. I just don't know the scope of the event. Eleanor, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Eleanor Crisell, Marketing and Events Director. The committee would be utilizing the amphitheater and the grounds similar to the event that we held two years ago now. So the amphitheater and all of the grounds would be utilized. I did not know this was occurring at this date. So I can get back to the committee this weekend, week on a meeting, and see alternatives that we can offer.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I would be in favor of moving it to the amphitheater on Ocean Avenue.
Yeah.
As that is a bigger location.
Absolutely.
Okay. I was just checking my calendar for any, we do have Rock Plaza. That's the week before. Okay, that date seems to be available, so I will get with the committee this weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary.
You're welcome.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda, over a hundred thousand. Would someone like to pull any of the items for this top agenda item? I'd like to approve them all. So may I have a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'd like to pull seven A. Just like to get an update on where we are on that.
Okay. Can I have a motion? Would you amend your motion to approve all except item seven A?
I would like to pull item E also.
All right. So let's go to item seven A. Would you withdraw your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Propose Resolution twenty-one dash zero four nine. Approve and authorize the city manager to sign a First Amendment to the interlocal agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and Florida International University for the racial and social equity comprehensive community needs assessment and detailed policy recommendations. Who do we have speaking?
Yes, Mayor. David Scott, Director, Economic Development and Strategy for the city of Boynton Beach. Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. I also have joining me Dr. Maria Elcheva from the Florida International University. She will be able to walk us through a brief presentation. But in the way of background, the commit, last year, the commission approved interlocal with FIU for a racial and social equity analysis, community analysis, as well as community conversations to bring back recommendations and strategies around equity. We proceeded with that work. Initially, the city contributed or twenty thousand dollars towards the project. With the remaining one hundred and five thousand dollars, it's anticipated to be achieved through a joint approach to grant, applicate through grant applications. That process has been prolonged. And so we're coming back to the commission today to allow us to proceed with this project and continue the work of this community assessment by allowing the city to close the financing gap with city funds in the amount of a hundred and five thousand dollars. Of that amount, sixty thousand dollars will be reimbursed back to the city once the anticipated grants are received and approved. And this amendment also allows for an extension. Originally, we had anticipated for this project to be complete within the six months, but we're, because of that grant process, we're asking for a slight extension through the end of this year. So I will ask Maria, Dr. Elcheva, at this time to provide you with an update. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Good evening. Can you, I hope you can hear me. This is Maria Elcheva. Thank you all for the invitation to provide you an update on our work with the community and with the city staff on this important project. I want to first mention that this comprehensive process ensures not only the representation of different voices in developing solutions, but is also an important step that sets the city on a course for sustainable and equitable development in which all residents, businesses, and other community members benefit. I also want to mention to you that this is a model. I've worked with many communities throughout South Florida and portions of the work that we will be doing, we've commenced doing with the city are being done across our communities. But in none of them is this work as comprehensive in scope, including all these various elements. Usually it's done piecemeal. And that's why when I speak about this work, I give your city as an example of how to do it right in a way to engage the community, but also provide the evidence-based research that is so important for your decision making. Next slide, please. Guided by your vision, we designed the scope that provides the analytics, as I mentioned, to develop a baseline understanding of community characteristics and trajectory. We use indicators across the five equity pillars that you defined, you prioritized. And this will allow the city ultimately to understand its own residents, its own needs, but also take concerted, community-driven action towards solutions. Our work includes the analytical framework, community engagement, and the final piece of study findings and recommendations for each policy area. I want to emphasize again that this process is community-driven. We are data experts and will structure the conversation with the hard data. But we want community leaders to be the champions of this transformation and, as I said, to help the city set its priorities. To that end, we have a plan for an enhanced and authentic community engagement that includes a community survey, focus groups, regular committee meetings across the five pillars, as I mentioned, with participants representing various communities and interest groups. This process connects the different indicators and will ultimately identify the barriers and opportunities for community development. I also want to mention that we're not looking at the city as a single entity, but all the analytics will be developed by neighborhood and with the view of the different characteristics and needs of diverse community groups. Next slide. Some of these metrics within the five groups relate to economic opportunity and mobility, educational achievement and workforce development, housing conditions and homeownership, crime and safety, and health outcomes. And we've already started looking at the baseline characteristics for Boynton Beach and various groups. Currently, we have comprehensive data up to two thousand nineteen, so pre-COVID for most of our metrics. But by the time we were able to present the final assessment, we will have the two thousand twenty and even some of the two thousand twenty-one data available, which will, again, more timely data means better decisions. What we are seeing, though, in terms of demographics and economic characteristics is quite indicative of how the city is evolving. We see significant population growth, thirteen percent in the last decade, two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen, and the community is changing in makeup. There was, for over that time period, there has been a fifteen percent growth of Black and African American residents and a forty-seven percent growth of Hispanic residents. Earlier, I heard the city proclaim the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, showing its appreciation of the contributions of that group. And our data shows that there has been, again, two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen, a thirty-seven percent growth of that community in Boynton Beach. Another indicator that I want to give you as an example of positive development is the decrease in median age of city residents. We typically consider this a positive development because it means more families with children and more people in the working age groups live in the city, which means the city is an attractive place to live. In fact, about forty percent of householders moved in their housing unit in Boynton Beach in two thousand and seventeen or later. We look at median household incomes. We look at poverty rates. Both of these are on par with Palm Beach County. But one thing I should note, and many communities across South Florida certainly paying even more attention than before to that issue, is housing. Housing, as we know, represents the single largest component of total household expenses for most families and households. And among Palm Beach municipalities, Boynton Beach, in terms of cost burdened households and renters, is in the top municipalities, in the top five municipalities. In other words, there is a large percentage of your households for whom housing costs, housing and related costs are not on par with their income levels. I also want to note in that relation, as an example of how we are dissecting the data, is that only about forty percent of Black households in Boynton Beach are homeowners, compared to about fifty-seven percent of Hispanic and sixty-eight percent of white households. And this distinction is important because homeownership has traditionally been an important way for households to build wealth. We also reviewing data at neighborhood level, again, looking at census tracts and block groups, the smaller geographic units that comprise a Boynton Beach neighborhood. We see lower expectancy, life expectancy rates for certain groups, especially for Black and African American residents, lower rates of health insurance. Again, these are numbers and statistics that will be included and enhanced in the final report. All of these analytics and more will provide only a baseline understanding of the community. But we're also monitoring, as I said, more current trends related to the pandemic effect. Next slide, please. And this is my final slide in which I'm showing you a brief, a very quick timeline of how we anticipate the work will progress. As you saw, this is a very focused, at the same time, very granular approach to understanding the Boynton Beach communities. But we also want to help the city design very thoughtful, impactful, and sustainable strategies for equitable development. This comprehensive secondary data collection is in progress, and I showed you some of it earlier. In the summer, in the early summer, this year, we will form committees around the five focus areas and start presenting some of this topical data and inviting their feedback from the various community groups represented in them. In early fall, we will collect community data with the survey. We will also have focus groups and interviews to enhance that community perception data. All of these elements will lead to the development of the community assessment report, which will give you the evidence to make strategic investments in specific communities and focus areas. And by early two thousand twenty-two, we will deliver the policy recommendations, which will be, again, authenticated by the community. In other words, we will continue obtaining input throughout this whole process. So by the time we present, we deliver these recommendations and policy actions, it will already have achieved the community input that's important in that process. My next slide is just my contact information. I invite any community members who are listening and who wish to be involved in this process to contact me and get engaged. And I will just end by reiterating what I've said before, that we are FIU, we are a partner in this effort. We're not just a consultant. We are in South Florida. We work with communities like yours. And we view this work as a long-term partnerships, as part of our mission to help our communities thrive. Thank you for your attention, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
May I also add that if you observe the schedule, it is intended to provide those policy recommendations ahead of the budget process so that the commission would be very much informed on those initiatives which they would like to proceed in advance.
Thank you, David. You said the policy recommendations for next year's budget?
Correct.
Okay.
For the, the policy recommendations come out at the beginning of two thousand twenty-two, which will inform the budget process for the following year.
Correct. And that commission can make those decisions?
Correct.
All right. Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we have item seven E, approve phase two of task order with West Architecture and Design in the amount of a hundred twenty-four thousand for general consulting contract scope to perform the final design and permitting for the reconstruction of Pence Park.
Yeah, I had that one pulled again. Based on, you know, a hundred twenty-four thousand, I was just wondering what's been reconstructed in Pence Park? Just give me an overall of what's going on there and what you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner. I neglected to put a photo of what was going on with this project, and I've prepared a presentation. If you don't mind, I'd like to show it. Alan, can you load my PowerPoint, please?
Yes, Gary. I'll load it right up. Thank you.
It's a really short presentation.
Okay.
Alan, can you not load that as a PowerPoint? You have to show it as a PDF.
All right. I will load it as a PowerPoint. Stand by, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I've created an effect with PowerPoint, so it's going to show the existing plot of land. And then as the new site plan shows on it, it appears right over where the old one was. And it really illustrates the differences between what is existing and what's proposed. Otherwise, I would just show you the PowerPoint or the PDF version. I might be stuck with Adobe. That's okay. Alan, if it takes too much longer, let's just go to the PDF.
Okay, one.
I learned a little lesson. Don't get fancy with my PowerPoints. There it is.
You weren't kidding. It is brief.
Yeah, it's just two slides.
That's a long presentation, man.
Presentation.
While waiting, just a little background on this. This is one of the oldest parks in the city. It's actually Pence Park, and we haven't done much to it since it's been a long time. So part of the genesis of these projects started with the community outreach to us about the conditions there and some of the things. So in light of just band-aiding and repairing things, we looked at what it would take to rehab the whole entire park, which is where we're at right now. So we did the preliminary design with West Construction, and we took that through the community and through the Parks and Rec Board, and that's where we're at now. And this is the product of that preliminary design.
Correct.
And before Gary starts, though, I think it's important that the commission understand that, you know, we are going to complete design work, and in that work that we're approving tonight, if I'm correct, Gary, is to get pretty strong design or construction estimates. Those funds, we do not have any funding identified at this point in our capital program to construct these improvements at this point. Some of the new approach we've been taking over the past few years is to get some of these designs completed. One, for better planning into the future and to have, you know, shovel-ready, so to speak, opportunities for potential grants and so forth. So right now, this is not something that's going to be constructed next year, Vice Mayor Hay. Not yet. We would have to build this into capital, but we need to know what that number is first. So this is the work we need to do first to get a good design and then get a good price, and then we figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah, it also gives us an opportunity to look at potential phasing as well so that we could break it up into parts that may be more economically feasible for the city as well.
So you basically could do in a, like Sarah Sims Park, you're doing a revamp of the whole thing, basically.
Yes, you're absolutely right. The PowerPoint, they're having problems with it. My apologies about that.
No problem.
But if you go to slide two, you'll be able to.
I mean, it's, Alan.
Just go to the next slide, Alan. That's fine, just as it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, you tried.
Yeah.
So the benefit of this new park and go into final design is we can phase this proposed park. Can you just go ahead and slip, go to slide two? And so with the final design, we'll be able to phase the park and build it in ways that we can afford to build it. So with phase one, we might decide that we can afford to build it, because there's two halves to it. There's a left and a right half. We've eliminated the road that's along the railroad tracks. Here's the photo of it now.
There you go. That's good.
And so we've moved that road from the left side of the park to running right through the middle of it.
Tree one, the touch something.
No, I'm doing, yeah, stop, stop the mouse.
Please don't touch your thing. So with moving the road down to the center, we can gate that center road off. It creates twenty-two parking spaces along that center road. And we've got twelve parking spaces along Sixth, and we have twelve parking spaces along Fourth. So we've got a total of forty-three parking spaces when we're done. Whereas right now, there's just a parking that's along Fourth. Right now, people use this park at lunchtime only to park underneath the tree for shade. Currently, people are parking along the railroad tracks from the adjacent roofing company. This will formalize the parking spaces, put people in places we want them to be and not in places we don't want them to be. We're going to have a walking path around the field portion. We're going to have restrooms and then a basketball court. So basically, it's going to be available for events as well. This would be a great location for a weekend market, you know, weekend morning day market, and a great place for people to come watch their kids play sports.
Did we repurpose this park or the field? Wasn't it baseball fields years ago? And then we turned this into a multipurpose.
Absolutely.
Very heavily used. I mean, the people, it's wonderful when you go by there, especially in the evening time. Lot of soccer and a heavily used facility that's pretty worn down.
One of the things that we do lack in the city is athletic fields. So this would give us another opportunity to have a field that they could program, recreation department. We already have it currently, but this will give us a brand-new field to program.
Yeah, I've used it with my son. We played over there many years ago. I won't say how many. Very good, Gary. I'm sure you'll be back before us with additional views and looks and feels and all that good stuff, man.
Great job.
Do a better presentation next time.
Mr. Penzerga. Gary, I see that the cost of the design work is a hundred twenty-four. Do you happen to have a ballpark figure of the total cost?
Yeah, we're roughly looking at an order of magnitude around two point nine million for the park when it's done.
Okay.
We're hoping to be able to build it, like I said, in smaller chunks. And with the road running down the middle of the project, we can build the left, the right side, you know, so we have options, which was the benefit of this design.
Wonderful.
All right. No, I remember when I moved to Boynton Beach, they had the kickball league there, and so I remember using that quite a bit. And so the questions that I have is in regards to SEPTED. You know, if you're putting a walking path next to a railroad track with no fence, there's the ability for a lot of bad things to happen very quickly. In addition, you know, is that safe to have that walking path in that location is another concern that I have. So I want to make sure that it's reviewed for crime prevention through environmental design before we do this. I'm happy that we're changing it up. I'd like to get a little bit more information on who Mr. Pence was. I believe he donated the land to the city. So hopefully, the Historic Resources Preservation Board or our archivist can get us more information about who he was, and so he can get the credit that he's due. And no, this is something that's exciting to see to move forward because there's not. But there's, I guess the other question that I had is in regards, not necessarily this project, but the senior center. Before our meeting is done, are we, and so I like to make sure we put that on to future. Before our meeting is done, are we? And so I like to make sure we put that on to future agenda. I just don't want to forget saying that. So I'm looking forward to moving forward with the the design review. However, I want to make sure that this is what the the community wants, having the ball, the football fields, soccer fields, I guess canopy trees as well. But it but making sure that it is safe for the residents because we had someone murdered here in this park a long time ago.
Fisher, just so you're aware, I had a public meeting in Forest Fields Park with the community development there, and I showed them this. So many people have been able have had community input on this project as well as the Park and Rec Board.
And and a part of the final design, well, that is something that we'll be reviewing is the SEPTED requirements. So this this drawing, what you're looking at is just the preliminary drawing that we did with them to start the conversation. So as we develop the the construction drawings, we'll definitely take all that into account.
Was Brightline supposed to be doing? They were only doing the fencing at the intersections, right? Was there any fencing contemplated if that once they get back up and going?
There were discussions at one time. I do believe that Brightline was going to fence the whole corridor. I don't I don't know the current. I can check into that.
Yeah, well, I think since they've stopped running in COVID, they've kind of stopped everything. But there were that was the plan. I don't it'd be interesting. We'll have to reach out to Ally to see.
I'm okay, you know, using aggressive plants rather than the the fencing because I think it's probably less maintenance.
Yeah, I think they wanted us to maintain it. Yeah.
Right. They they put the fence in, but then any type, any time the fence breaks, we would have to fix it versus aggressive plants. If you put you put Bogan Valley, nobody's really getting through.
Yeah.
So may I have a motion to approve?
Oh, second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
The move.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving forward with the new business commission to discuss and approve fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget workshops, dates and times. Lori, you have some in mind?
Yes, sir. We're I'm sorry, I didn't. For the agenda, we're looking at July twelve, thirteen, fourteen. We have, as you know, we always we hold aside three days for the workshops, typically only use two. We try to do it mid-July. We will convey the proposed budget to the commission the first week of July. Give you some time with it, and then staff will set one-on-ones with you and go through that prior to those workshops. And then we're we try to stagger the start time so the public has an opportunity, obviously, and for those that work in the evening time. So we're looking at Monday at five PM. These are only our suggestions. We can move it around however it works for you. Tuesday, starting at ten, and Wednesday, if needed, at two. We do not put an end time because that gives the commission some latitude of of not having to stay for six hours if you conduct your business earlier, you know, or sooner and be able to to close the the workshop. So let us know if, right now, looking at your calendars, from what we see from our management of your calendars, everybody seemed available for the for twelve, thirteen, fourteen. So.
Yeah, I'm fine with these dates.
Bye.
You like the start times? Do you want to do anything differently?
I think the only thing is is that if we always start our meetings at five thirty.
Do Monday at five thirty?
Just so that it has that uniformity that everybody. And so that way, if someone gets off at five, you know, they have at least fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes to to get there.
And we are doing it in the Police Department Community Room, which is a nice, large room. I think it'll be a great setting, easy to get to, and give people an opportunity to get into PD. It's open now.
And we did that. Remember, we did that last year.
Not in the new PD.
Yes, we did.
Did we? No, we were virtual. No, we had.
I was there.
You were by yourself. Right.
No, there was other people there.
That's right, Mayor. My gosh, I forgot that.
Oh, yeah.
I think we were, most of us were virtual.
So no, it's it's I'm very excited to have this and we'll, you know, invite the the public to make any sort of requests for during public comments. You know, if you want to have that traffic, traffic calming measures, if you want to have that park improvement, it's not something we do this year. It's something that is put into our capital improvement plan so we find the money to do it in the future, similar to what we just discussed regarding Pence Park.
And we will show here, moving forward till we reach the the dates, we'll show this as an announcement on the agenda each meeting. So and obviously, market it out, push it out through social media, website, all that stuff, too. Get the get the word out.
Thank you. Item twelve A, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero one six.
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending chapter twenty-seven Advisory Boards and Committees, section twenty-seven dash two, providing for selection of chair and vice chair of each board, amending section twenty-seven, twenty-two definitions to correct describer's error, providing for conflict severability and a codification and an effective date.
So Jim, what was the the scribner's error?
If you look, I think it's shown on there. No, it's not. Oh, it was a date in the year. Refer to the ordinance incorrectly, previous ordinance.
Hi, the this is Crystal, also the Art Advisory Board. Name change, arts, plural in one spot. So it's just changed from plural to single art advisory board.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
The move.
All those in favor? I'm sorry. Is there any discussion from the City Commission? Is there any discussion from the the public? Yes, I have hands raised for Kim Kelly and Michael Simon. So. Kim? Yeah, Ms. Kelly, you're currently self-muted. All right. And I had see that Michael Simon has their hand raised. Mr. Simon, you are you are currently self-muted.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Wonderful. Thank you. I I just wanted to ask a question of the commission and or the city attorney. How will this affect our current boards that may or may not have had an appointment made specifically for a the position of chair or vice chair? For instance, the Crab Board has new members, none of which were appointed as either of those positions. Is that what what is the is the is the practice going forward? You know, we have now none of neither a chair or vice chair for that board, nor has anyone been appointed by the commission. How do we work that?
Well, until the ordinance passes on second reading, the commission still has the authority to appoint the chair and vice chair. If the commission determines that it would table those appointments until such times as the boards are up and running under the new language of the ordinance, then the boards would select their chair and vice chair. The commission would thereafter ratify.
Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly, I see that your hand is raised. Do you have a comment regarding this advisory board ordinance?
You might be walking the dog like my husband was when he raised his hand with his phone in his pocket.
Okay.
We'll be second meeting if somebody wants to reach out to her today.
All those in, sorry, seeing no further discussion, we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Pennsor?
Yes.
Vote is four oh.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number twenty-one dash zero one seven.
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, relating to the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District, dissolving the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District pursuant to section one eighty-nine point oh one oh seven one one Florida statutes specifying intent providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
So Commissioner Pennsor, you wanted to have a discussion on this. Do you want to say something?
Yes, absolutely. So I have spoken to residents and HOA leaders of Parkside Community. It is the largest residential community in that district, and the consensus is it is time for this QPOD to be shut down. I've also spoken to the local businesses, particularly the breweries. The bottom line here, folks, is that this district has existed for way too long, and we know that its assets and its maintenance has now been transferred over to the city. There is no longer any need to continue this district. And, you know, it it doesn't matter if they're paying fifty dollars or five hundred dollars. The time has come for its end. And so from my standpoint, I see no reason to continue an extra layer of government, which no one attends to, to continue paying for the secretary and a website and all of these things that they do no other function at this point. So that's where I am. Again, this is on the support of the residents.
Thank you. And so are you saying that to dissolve it before tax rolls go out for this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in decline of moving forward with that. As clearly stated, we reduced the assessment in half because of the the need to finish the eco park. In addition, there is additional costs that the city was unable to recover through FEMA because of Hurricane Irma when the city took over that the Quantum Park Overlay Development District's management. The the fear that I have is that the, you know, the brewers and the residential make, I believe, a third component of the the Quantum Park Overlay Development District. You have multiple rentals, multiple industrial properties, and Publix distribution, which it makes up a big chunk of that. And that I would want to make sure that they continue making sure the the Quantum Park Overlay Development District has that eco park that they've been so wanting. Otherwise, you know, the the situation is is that are they contributing to the this new park for the operation and maintenance of it? Because the city might have to determine, you know, determine that it's not in this year's budget to move forward with it because of the further upkeep of that park. It is over forty acres, and that is not something that is easily done year after year. That is why I'm in favor of keeping it at the the half rate that the Quantum Park Overlay Development District Board decided it to be. And the if the quantum, because they believe the commission, the the board decided to sunset it before the end of next year. And so I'm continuing with that so that in the year two thousand twenty-two, it would be dissolved. Here. Yeah. Board member Katz, or sorry, Commissioner Katz.
Thank you. And yeah, kind of harking back to the latest Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District meeting that we had. We had a similar conversation, and and I am in agreement with with the mayor. I do understand Commissioner or Vice Mayor Pennsor's position. This is, it's been a weirdly satisfying and unique aspect of this job for the past five years to pursue solutions to what were gross problems with the management of the Quantum Park Overlay District and the individuals who had been in charge of it for for a number, a long number of years. For the past five years, myself and the mayor particularly, from the elected officials that have been serving up here, have have dug into this, attended Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District meetings, property owners association meetings within the QPOD. We literally called for a state investigation by the IG, which went nowhere because there is a severely broken IG system at the state level to help us look into this and and pursue if if violations of law or ethics occurred. The bottom line is that in the past five years, we have gotten rid of the bad actors. We've dramatically reduced the tax, and I I wish that there was another way. And but what I mean by that is that this park, which has been envisioned for for, I think, decades almost, had been properly funded with the revenue generated by this tax taxing district at an appropriate time in the past, had not, what I believe is unethical activity taken place. We're we're at the end of the journey of the QPOD, as the mayor pointed out, that based on recent actions by us acting as the board, the park assessment, the Quantum Park assessment will no longer exist in one year's time. But I'm I'm just not at a position where I would want to undercut the the final chunk of funding necessary to get the eco park off the ground because I have I have one year left up here. I didn't get to achieve my goal of pursuing and holding accountable those bad actors, but a consolation prize to that would be dissolving the park and or dissolving the park district and ensuring that the funding is there. As far as I know right now, that the funding is not in our city capital improvement project to to cover the startup costs or or early maintenance costs. So that those are some of the reasons why, at this point, I would be interested in sticking with the current course of action that the QPOD has, the QPOD Board has elected. And and to the mayor's final point, I'll make, I do sympathize more with homeowners, with individual property owners, with small businesses who were impacted by this tax, but by virtue of their limited footprint in terms of acreage. We have reduced it dramatically to a fairly nominal assessment, whereas Publix and and other larger entities are the ones who share the the bulk of the burden of the tax, which will disappear in one year's time under the current plan. So that that's kind of where I'm at right now. But I do, again, respect the the desire of the Vice Mayor to eliminate the park and the.
I'm a commissioner now.
Yeah, we did that earlier.
Yes, by your doing, yes.
I do respect the position, and and I do hope that in one year's time that that it will be achieved based on our our current course of action.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to say a couple of points. Number one, Commissioner Katz, I know how important that Joe Crowder Dog Park is to you. Is that park funded exclusively by the residents in the surrounding area? Or is that park funded by everyone who enjoys it in the city?
I think it's the surrounding area.
It's a terrible example in that case.
It's technically funded by the the master association.
Right, yeah, terrible example. But Commissioner Katz, I I think you get the idea. You get the idea that if a park is to be enjoyed by everybody, by the whole city, why would we only assess just the people who live there, right? Now, that particular case I pointed out, because of that particular history, was that a DDA or whatever that was? That was an exception. But my common sense says, why in the world would we ask just these residents to pay for that park? Now, you also said that this is a park district, which it is not, which goes to the point that this has transformed into something which it was not just to be that. Now, was the park a part of it? So there is a compromise. There is a solution. And your concern is valid. I have the same concern. You know, I've been fighting for this park for the longest time. Your concern that we will not have enough funding for this. Now, staff is applying for grants, so there is a very good chance that we may get it. So but that's not certain. But the other solution is that we're going to be receiving almost fifteen million dollars from the American Rescue Plan, and we can use that for projects that are not currently in the budget. So I think there is a win-win here. We can use the American Rescue Plan to support Pence Park. We can use it for the Quantum Eco Park. That goes to the well-being of our residents. That goes to driving tourism towards our city. And this way, we don't have to continue to assess these residents. Again, they want it shut down. They've paid for this for too long. There is a solution. The solution is right there.
Thank you. So I'll clarify. If I said park district, I didn't mean. The park is the purpose of the district. I simply was referring to the name, which is Quantum Park Overlay District, so I might have left a few words out of there. So I apologize for if any confusion was there. I I I'm not discounting the position. I fully understand it. I think. At the the Quantum Park meeting that we that we had a couple of weeks ago. My position was and and the gentleman who kind of runs the district right now for us, what's left of it. Said that we will have an opportunity come either late July or early August where if we. Have chosen through the budgetary process or if if recovery funds are are applicable in this case. And applied that we we have time after the city budget meetings in July. To further reduce or eliminate the tax if that is the will of the the QPOD in this commission. So with that being said, I'm not saying that I am. A hundred percent against it and I would never vote to dissolve it at this current point in time, but the only way I could or would. Is if I was one hundred percent confident that the funds were otherwise available and earmarked in our budget. Were by virtue of of dispensing of of federal dollars, if that's applicable. I would need to see that first before I were to act on any sort of immediate dissolution prior to the upcoming tax year.
Mayor.
Yes.
Multiple points. Number one. I do not want to continue paying for an attorney, for staff, for a website and all these other miscellaneous things. For something that we don't need to pay for, that the residents don't want. Number two. So you want to use this to continue funding that park. That is an admirable goal and I understand that. But let's say we don't get the grant. So we extend it for another five years. What if the park plan changes? Do we just keep extending it? At what point do we shut it down? There are too many variables and we don't even have to go down this route at all because of the American Rescue Plan. We do have funds coming to make substantial investments. And we can take off this tax burden from the residents. I think that's a win-win.
For me, we can do it January, the the first meeting in January, because the tax rules are based on January first. And so to dissolve it, because that was always the the plan. Is that this is the final assessment in two thousand twenty one, because if we dissolve it by September of two thousand twenty two. They would not have to make the two thousand twenty two park assessment. Or taxing district assessment. In addition, there's only a finite number of funds. So if money is coming from somewhere else to go there, that means we're not going to have the money to do other things.
At this point.
Excuse me. And I what I was going to finish is that you mentioned economic activity. Parks normally don't add much economic activity unless we're planning on putting it, you know, some sort of revenue generator there. Which the the current passive park is not supposed to be revenue generating. I don't believe we're charging for people to go there in the future. I believe that we want to have, I did speak to someone. From the fine district to there are grants available to have. What is that called? Kayak launches along the the city Boyne Beach parcel. However, we want to have the the funds available. And it's kind of like we're at the end of the journey. And if we stop now, we may not finish cross the finish line. And I don't want to see that.
I would disagree in parks not being a revenue generator. They attract people, they improve property values. It's good. People are going to want to come here, especially if we have a high-quality phenomenal park. That's going to drive more people to live here, more people to do business here. So that's what I meant by an economic generator. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I do caution you is that if it does get denied. This motion to a. What is it to dissolve? When can it be brought back?
Okay.
Yes.
So it, again, it's not exactly what you're requesting tonight, but I will commit to. And reassure you that the the current plan that I'm operating under is that there is a a grant available that. In conjunction with the final tax revenue year under the current plan for the QPOD and receiving that grant. That gets us in striking distance of where we need to be in an achievable. Amount of, you know, maximum gap that the city could cover. To the concern about extending the district beyond this current year, I I have no intention to. We will find out. And maybe Andrew can correct me on this or or clarify. The grant we're talking about here is something that we will know during the course of the next year, like we're in a position to apply for this grant.
We, yes, we've already applied for it. I believe the ward is in October. They tell us we we find out in October whether we got the grant. It's four hundred thousand dollar grant to the, yes, with the Wreck and Trails Board, I think, is from what Casey Young has told me.
So it, I'm operating under the assumption that if we get the grant, that's great. Because that gets us to where we need to be or close to it for funding the the startup cost for the park and getting it going. If we don't get the grant, I I personally still am in favor of dissolving the district at that time. Knowing that we have some extra revenue to further our efforts to get it launched. And that whatever gap, you know, that it moves on to a plan B that we haven't thought out yet. And that's, I guess, a later discussion, but I'm operating under the assumption that either we get the grant or not. But the district's still, in my opinion, and if, well, I won't be here to vote on it, but if I had a vote a year from now. I would still vote to dissolve it and then deal with the gap by whatever other means we would, we would have to do that.
And furthermore, is that we aren't receiving the full American Rescue Plan fifty million this year. We're receiving half and the remaining half is coming next year. So even if the, we don't receive the grant. I do agree with you that the American Rescue Plan could be used to fund us. So I'll entertain a a motion to approve.
So clearly I don't have the votes, but I will make the motion nonetheless, because I vehemently oppose this unnecessary. And quite frankly, useless layer of government, which no one attends to, and we both know that. I do not want to continue paying lawyers and. Office supplies and websites. To pay for what? What? What are we getting out of it? The assets and the maintenance have already been transferred to the city. So they're paying twice. I'm not going to ask residents to pay twice for a park that's enjoyed by everybody. And so if that's what you'd like, that's okay with me. I understand your reasoning. But the reality is we don't even have to wait. I think it's easy to tax people if you don't happen to live there. So I move to approve this, knowing that I do not have the votes.
Is there a second? Seeing any further discussion? Seeing none? Anyone in the public? So no one in the public wanted to comment on this, Commissioner Pennsir. All right. Seeing no one in the public, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Hay.
Hi.
Commissioner Katz.
No.
Commissioner Pennsir.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
No.
Vote is two to two.
Thank you. The the motion fails to find a majority. Moving forward to future agenda items. As I mentioned in the meeting, to have, get some more information regarding the senior center.
And you're like, yeah, I wanted some clarification on what our potential future plans are for renovations or what were you looking for?
When, yeah, I I got an email from the bowling center, when will it be open, if ever, again?
No, no, we're, I'd have to talk to it. We're ready to open. I mean, we're back to.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Okay, so hopefully.
Okay, I haven't heard from, I forget her first name.
It was.
With the bowling center, Judy?
I'll forge it.
Please do, I'll read it.
The other thing is, is that can we make sure to have masks at the meeting? For people that do forget them. And, you know, for part of the the talks is that I did speak with Edward Boyland regarding the arena. And I want to know if we can get an update from Washington Prime to see if they're still interested in moving forward with that. I'd like the the commission to see if they're in agreement to to move forward with that, to see if we want to. Spend the money for the feasibility study so that we can really program out that space for the future.
I'm open to hearing about it.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would, I wouldn't mind a a status update from the property owners of that, that particular. Coalition.
And would you also request any amount that is needed to move forward with funding?
Subsequent to a, to an update, I guess, not.
I mean, I'd like that that's part of the update. How much, what is it going to cost the city to move forward with the feasibility study for the arena? And it's not just the arena, it's kind of giving us the overview of the finances. And capability of our city. We are doing it for diversity and equity. We're getting a a portion of that. Understanding of whose we're here and what are we missing? It's the the aspect of that feasibility study is how can we grow economic activity? Where we see eighty eight percent of the people that live here do not work here. And that is something that I want to change.
I agree with you.
I have no.
I agree with that.
No problem, I guess, pursuing additional information like that.
What we will do is bring back to you, because I don't have the number off the top of my head, what the original. Price was estimated when we were looking at partnering with Washington Prime in the county before, and then COVID hit and everybody backed out. So I'm bringing you that cost estimate of what the study was going to cost at that time.
And and get some, an update from Washington Prime to see if they're still a willing partner, because we're not doing this on our own.
Okay, I can ask them to maybe come to the meeting and give you an update or provide something to us.
You know, we we had the property rezoned, I believe, in. Two thousand nineteen. To to suburban mixed use, and so. If there's something that I can do to move forward with the redevelopment of that parcel, I'd like to do it. Especially if we have American Rescue Plan funds to help out.
To that, Mayor, that the, that that initial fourteen point nine was an estimate given by the Treasury, so our actual calculation based on. Some some formula attached to CDBG takes our funding down to thirteen six and change.
Okay. Now, it'll be interesting to see the the rest of Palm Beach County as well. That was just weird to see how much green acres in Lake Worth got when they have thirty thousand less residents.
I I don't know their full formula, but it is CDBG entitlement related, but I I thought they had census data in there and some other things, but I'm I'm finding out what that. You know, kind of what, it was several elements, I believe, that they, when they finally did their calculation.
And then.
May, may I ask Mayor for a couple of items that I don't know whether we need to carry forward on future agenda, the mural project? Vice, or Mayor, excuse me, Commissioner Pennsir. I think the the topic of doing a mural program, I think we've shifted that over to the Arts Advisory Board. And I think they're actually working toward developing some ideas. Do we want to continue to carry this as a future? I I don't know. When they're coming back or. But I I just don't, I don't know how much, what activity from.
This is an initiative I'm still very much interested in. I do not know what the status is. That's actually why I asked for that, so I could find out. More, more about it.
Then I'll, what I'll do is ask Glenn if they have it. I I don't know if it's been. I think they're actively discussing it, so I'll try to get an idea of a timeframe by which they'll. Think they'll have some program ideas together. I know his focus right now is strategic plan and and looking at the ordinance and so forth, so. Okay, leave it on, that's fine. We just, yeah, I'm just trying to think of what that, what you want to back. And I think we'll have the economic development incentive. We had sent. An email out to you and the commission a while back on what. Different cities in the county was doing. Would you like us to just kind of recreate that information into an agenda item to bring forward?
Yes, I was, I was under the impression that was a draft, and so I did not want to put that forward until that had been more finalized.
I'll find out from David. Either way, we'll bring it.
Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to add for future agenda item. More lighting on the, on our, on our beach, on, on, what is that ocean front? I was over there the other night and it, I just drove through and it was like pitch dark.
That is for the sea turtles.
Huh?
Sea turtles.
Can't have the lights on at night.
Oh, you can't have it?
Yeah.
The park should be closed at night. I, are, we, what time are we closing in now? It's staying open a little later because the daylight.
Yeah, nine, I believe they close at nine. There are, we do have a project to repair some of the lights there.
Yeah.
Hey, we do have a project, they're, they are, they are shielded so that they do only, they don't. Spill over onto the, to the ocean side, so.
I can't remember the city, but I I saw one on TV that had the, the lighting at the foot. Of the, like, at the tree or something, and it 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 did not. Impede anything, it did not disrupt anyone's. It may be something that we could take a look at and may maybe Ocean Ridge would. You know. Permit it or something, but. I was, I was looking at some kids that were walking on the beach. Not on the beach, but on the boardwalk, I guess. And it was, I said. I I I would, I felt. I feared for their, for their safety. Because it could ease, someone could have easily jumped out and grabbed them and. Maybe they shouldn't be over there, that's true, but. There's, isn't there something we could do? In terms of. Is there ocean ridge that is objecting to the lighting over there or is just a law?
I mean. The question is, is that are we able to get like sidewalk lighting?
Think, don't, don't we have boardwalk lighting?
We, we did have one time, we had low voltage lighting on the boardwalk when they did the original project. It's failed. The ocean environment, as you know, is very. Harsh on on some of our infrastructure there. So we did not replace it, but we can look at something that's alternative there. To illuminate the boardwalk. It they, we do have to get clearance from DEP. It's it's a DEP requirement as far as the lighting on the beach. They look at that very closely, as obviously with the sea turtles. There's some very strict guidelines on that, so, but we can take a look at that and I can, I can bring you back some information, either offline or or at a meeting.
Isn't, is the park open in the dark? I thought we closed, I mean, but we we adjust hours for summer and winter. But do we keep it open?
Till nine o'clock, I believe.
Well, do we want to reconsider whether we want people in that beach park in the dark of night? That you're not, I, I think that's probably more of a discussion of whether that park should even be open. At nighttime. We we do keep it open a little later to enjoy the evening time, obviously. We'll, we'll put together some numbers, Vice Mayor, on on lighting costs and see what we can do for capital. But I don't, I don't, I think that is something we might want to look at in terms of park hours, if you do.
It drew my attention because it was just, I could hardly even see the little kids, you know, and. I said, man, this is an accident waiting to happen. It has, I guess. Does it have something to do with the turtles and laying eggs and all that good stuff?
Yeah, they they go the wrong way. They go toward the the moonlight, which they think the artificial lighting is the moonlight. And so it has to be dark, and that's what I'm wondering, you know, in that case, I I question whether we should have people in in the park and at dark. All of our other parks close before dark.
There is a playground there, there's pavilions there that that are lit up on the that that bottom side. I believe that's part of it, but we'll do, we'll do an analysis that I'll.
Okay.
I'll take a ride out there as well at the, in the evening time, so I can actually put eyes on it as well.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Is there anything else?
We're going to be swearing in the new vice mayor at the next meeting.
Wonderful. And changing all of the the shirts and the letterhead.
Oh, boy, yeah.
He's not technically the new vice mayor right now.
Been sworn in, yeah.
Still the vice mayor.
And Alan, would you please provide us with a closing?
Thank you, Mayor Grant. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the City of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the City of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all our our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's City of Boynton Beach Commission meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.